All right, good evening. Welcome to the October 22nd meeting of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting to order.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do believe Mr. Ogden will be here pretty soon, so. All right, if everyone has had a chance to review the consent agenda, if there are not any questions or if anyone would like to have anything removed, go ahead and let me know now. If not, I will accept a motion.
So may.
Second. First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mr. Peterson, roll call please.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, and next up, just say I'm glad I dressed up today as well. Can't be overdressed. Service awards, Jeremy Whitehill, 15 years with the police department.
Mayor, council. Not only is it Jeremy Whitehill's 15-year anniversary, but it's our first opportunity to introduce him as newly promoted to captain's position. So that did occur earlier this month, and so we also want to congratulate him on his promotion. Captain Whitehill has been with the police department since 2009. He is the commander for the Support Bureau, which includes Internal Affairs, Investigations, K-9, Drug Task Force Officer, Crime Prevention, Internal Affairs, I said that, police training, clerks, and community services such as ACO and Quartermaster, just to name a few of the things that he's over. He's committed to ongoing and continuous learning, and that is, and he's always willing to take on challenges, and that's very evident as you look at the amount of training hours that Captain Whitehill has put in over the last year. He actually put in 180 hours of training, attending FBI Supervisor Leadership Institute, FBI Executive Leadership Training, Advanced Incident Command Training, Cradle Point Certification, and a Police Fleet Conference. He spent 73 hours this last year dealing with IT-related issues and tickets internally for our department, and most of that time it was spent keeping our 30 to 40 programs that we use on a daily basis up and running, so that we can continue to do our jobs and so that the line staff can continue to be efficient and effective. Needless to say, we are proud and very happy to have him, and we hope to have him for many more years to come. He's a great asset, not only to our department, but I feel like the city as well with the knowledge that he brings in the areas of information systems and technology. So congratulations to Captain Whitehill for 15 years.
Well, it's all downhill from here. Next up, budget draft presentation.
Summer's going to put up the budget dashboard that I sent it to you earlier, so if you've had time to review it, but City Administrator Lyles is going to kind of go over most of the things that have changed since the last time you looked at this. So, take it away, Mr. Lyles.
So, as Jennifer said, this is an updated dashboard, so we've made a few changes since the last time that council has seen this. Specifically, a few changes when it comes to salaries and personnel expenses that I just want to point out to council. Couple of those are to include some on-call pay currently. Our on-call pay, quite honestly, is just pretty low compared to surrounding organizations, you know, and that's on-call for, and it affects several departments, all the way from the police department to water, wastewater, electric, so it touches a lot of departments. And currently, I believe we were paying $15 a day for that on, to be on-call. So we're going to be upping that in next year's budget. It'll be $30 a day during the week, and then on the weekends it'll be $60 to be on-call. We came to those numbers after looking at other cities and compared what those other cities are paying for their on-call personnel, so that's what we've currently budgeted. Now also, that is also, just for clarification, it'll be $60 as well on holidays to be on-call. That does exclude the police department because their holiday pay does work differently, and they can take those holidays at different points throughout the year, so those are scheduled differently. So we did budget an increase there in the on-call pay. You will see that change coming to council probably next month. We want to get that change done and have it on the books before the first of the year, so we can actually implement that in January. And I think I've mentioned to council before that we are currently going through our personnel handbook and rewriting basically the entire handbook. This one's going to come sooner than the rest of it, just so we can get that in the budget and start fresh January 1st, so you'll see that soon. The other thing we've changed is we have also upped our FTO pay for our field training officers for the police department. Again, I think they're paid something like $12 a day for every day that they actually train someone. We're going to actually move that to $25 a day. Again, we've looked at other surrounding organizations and looked at what they were paying and decided that that would be an appropriate step at this time to make sure that they're compensated for the time that they're spending training new officers as well. So that's in the dashboard, including the dashboard you see. And I think the other major, probably the biggest change that you're going to see is after discussions obviously with council, in one of our prior meetings, we talked about making sure that there are certain departments that we have to make some adjustments in salaries because we're just not filling positions. They're staying vacant, some upwards of a year. So we did go back and visit that, and we have actually moved the water, wastewater, and street departments. We went ahead and moved those employees that are at a pay grade nine or below. That would include like your lady positions and everything below that. Does not include the superintendents or assistant superintendents at this time. But everybody at pay grade nine and below will be actually moved all the way to the 50th percentile. So we're going to go ahead and make that jump. Again, it's more plottable because they have additional funds, you know, the water and wastewater generator own fund, street department has the sales tax as well. So we did incorporate that into the budget, so you'll see that, those employees at the 50th percentile. Now, the other, just to touch a second on the superintendents and assistant superintendents of those departments, those salaries will be moved along with the rest of the city at that halfway point to the 50th percentile. So depending on where they're currently at, will, could play into what or how much, if any, they get. So they will be receiving that. But as far as the, those specific departments will be moved all the way to the 50th. And again, that's after our conversations and making sure that we can get those positions filled. So you'll see that incorporated in there as well. And then just a couple other quick things to mention that I just don't know that we've mentioned in prior discussions, so just to make sure that council is aware. You know, currently, we did have, I think, $15,000 in years past budgeted in the facade grant. We did up that to $20,000 moving into next year, and we're actually going to be coming back to council at a later time with the request to actually change that program into more of a beautification grant program that can be utilized to beautification efforts across the city. So you'll hear about more of that in the future, but we did include some additional monies there as well. And then the other thing I don't know that we've mentioned yet is we did put monies in next year's budget for the new strategic plan, because next year is the fifth year for our strategic plan, so it's that time again already to do a new five-year strategic plan. So we'll be working with Summer in 2025 on that new plan, so we did incorporate those expenses in the budget as well. So those are all included in the dashboard that you see here tonight. So again, we're still open for any comments, any direction from the mayor or council as we move forward through this process. Jennifer, if I've missed anything, feel free.
Just to point out, our final numbers came in for our health insurance, and it's a 5.1% increase. I don't know if you went over that a couple weeks ago when I was here, but 5.1% increase in premiums, which is fantastic. I was very, very pleased with that. So that's incorporated in this, as well as the new cash reserve policy that was passed for the enterprise funds, that restricted column, those calculations have been done based on this budget, so that is included in this dashboard as well. I think that's all we had talked about.
Yeah, and just to touch again on that, because Jennifer made a fantastic point. Our health insurance is increasing 5%, so that will be a 5% increase on the city and also on the employee for that expense as well, for the employee portion that they currently pay. I'm very pleased with that, to be honest, and nobody likes an increase. We don't like an increase at all, but looking at surrounding companies and organizations and cities, we're very fortunate to continue to have the health insurance that we do. So our broker did a fantastic job, because it did not start out that low. We had a decent negotiation, and the broker had to really work to get it down to that. So we're very pleased with that. So although it's an increase, and I don't like an increase, but I think considering what's the market right now, it's very, very pleased with that.
With the, back to the salaries and employee pay on that, with the potential of minimum wage being raised with this election, did that factor into any of the changes that we made with the, with the pay increases for next year?
Not specifically to overall pay, because we were, again, we worked on, we added the COLA, that's anticipated at two and a half percent, 2.5%, and then we also added the increase to get us toward the 50th percentile, and then again, the 4% of the way through the pay grade for the employee on the anniversary date. So that's the things that we factored in. The actual increase in minimum wage isn't necessarily factored in at that level, but I will say that it was addressed, especially in the Parks Department. We did address that, and that's one of the reasons, of course, we had to, we had to look at the fees and stuff at the Parks Department. So it was addressed at that level.
Are we looking into outsourcing the strategic plan?
That's a great question. We're going to, we're going to start those conversations. I mean, Summer's still getting her feet wet a little bit, so we haven't really dove into that yet, but it's definitely something that we're going to be looking at. What we did is we budgeted the same amount we had budgeted last time we did the strategic plan, because we did hire a third party to help us with the website and all that kind of stuff, so we will have that option to do again if we choose to do that. But we haven't made a full plan on how we're going to proceed with that strategic plan. So I plan on sitting down with staff soon and getting that lined up.
Okay. Yeah, because I just, my biggest concern is with Summer's new role and getting started and everything that she's jumped into already, I know how much work that was for Drew.
It's a lot.
And just.
I, just if it makes you feel any better or not, I do plan on not doing such a robust strategic plan. We bit off a lot, and I'm very proud of the work staff had done to get done everything that we did, but it was a lot.
So not 767 steps?
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to do that this time. We're going to cut back a little bit. We have actually looked at some third-party help with tracking and that kind of thing. We decided not to budget that at this point, because it's a little expensive, and I think that we'll take that a step at a time as we go through the process, but no, I definitely hear you, and we'll definitely be watching that. I will mention though, I was just on a call this last week from another city in a completely different state that has saw our strategic plan, and they were very pleased with how we did that, so they reached out and had lots of questions. They're going to take our model and actually use it for their city. So it's a good model, I just think we can maybe cut back a little bit on the steps.
It is, it's just a little difficult to replicate because of the amount of steps per.
Absolutely.
No, the amount of sub-steps per step.
There you go, action steps.
On the plan of the, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then, have we, have we updated, well, I would assume not, considering we just made, kind of made the decision prior to this meeting.
No, we've not updated.
With IT, and that's something that we can just kind of let everybody know where we're at, the different things that we're looking at. You know, IT is definitely a pain point within every part of the city, and so we're looking at different options of things that we can do that might be a little bit of a more robust solution for every department, have a little more subject matter experts with the police department, with Public Works, people who've worked with that before, so. And whether that is bringing someone in-house or third-party, so that's what we're looking at. So we kind of just ballparked the number, honestly. Really, it was based off of my experience in IT. You know, most of the time, whenever you outsource something like that, it goes to a per-user basis, so I just kind of based an average cost of $50 per user with the amount of employees that roughly have machines, multiplied that, and it put us kind of at the number that we're looking at budgeting, so that would be, probably be updated on our next copy.
Yeah, that'll be on your next dashboard.
Okay. So if you have any input on that, and also to staff, if you have any input on that, you know, don't hesitate to let Jimmy know, or, yeah, just go to Jimmy. I'll forget, so. Because I know that's been, been some, some pain points. It always is. It's one of the reasons I got out of it, so.
Any other comments, questions, direction?
I think, actually, I'm good. I'll talk later with you about that. I have some ideas on something else.
All right. Again, if you think of something or have any questions, just reach out.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I'm still thoroughly enjoying the number, so.
The number looks good.
Any other questions? Comments, suggestions? Nothing? All right, fair enough. All right, next up, we will open up the visitor's section. Anyone has signed up to speak? No? You got anything, Whitney?
I'd love to.
Come on up. Don't forget to say your name, please.
Mayor and council, I'm Whitney Gießmann of the Nixa Chamber, and I live over there. I, first of all, I'm very excited about hearing about the facade grant being turned into a beautification. That's going to be amazing for our town, and to recognize the needs, the direction that we need to go, I think is just wonderful, so I'm very excited to hear about that. We got some fun things coming up at the end of the year for the Chamber that we haven't done before, and I just wanted to throw it out there to everyone in the room and, you know, the 5,000 people listening to this right now. The biggest thing is the Lead Ozarks Leadership Conference we have coming up on November 18th. We've never done anything like that before. I don't know that Christian County has had a conference to the size that we're trying to bring this one in to, and North Point has joined with us, since they're the only ones really big enough to house a conference like this. But if you haven't had a time to check it out on our website, I encourage you guys to do so. It's kind of like jumping into conference land, never done it before, so I think it's going to be great, though. The speakers we have lined up are going to be phenomenal, they're local leaders, local to southwest Missouri, and they're going to really bring a lot of education to our business people. So if you haven't had time to look at that, please do. We would love to have you come and hang out with us for the day. Otherwise, things are rock and roll in the Chamber. We are working on budgets for 2025 and working with the city on things as well and how we can partner, and things are going really, really well. So I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Well, thank you. We appreciate everything you're doing. All right, fair enough. I will close the visitor's section. The beautification program is actually something that stemmed from conversations going into the comprehensive plan. One of the people that we worked with on that pointed us into a direction of another community that had the same thing, and he said, "I like your program, but it should be a little more robust." And so a lot of cool things came out of that, so. All right, next up, moving on to second reading, Council Bill 2024-32.
Second reading, Council Bill Number 2024-32, in ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa, establishing chapter 13 of the Nixa City Code, repealing section 1-10 of the Nixa City Code, and repealing section 14-30 of the Nixa City Code, for the purpose of modifying and consolidating city code and ordinance provisions related to municipal court, including provisions related to issuance of administrative warrants. Presenting is Assistant City Attorney Mike Mace.
Thank you. This is the second reading, and we presented it last time. It basically just codifies the fact that we are now holding court instead of here, over at a division of the Circuit Court in that city to the east, and we have given, we're wanting to give ourselves warrant power or warrantability as a tool for investigating and enforcing the ordinances. The current warrant section is in the nuisance chapter, and it only relates to that chapter, and as things have gone along, we've had discussions with other staff, and there are times when we'd like to be able to do something to investigate, and we don't have a tool. And so this is something that we're looking at doing, and we had an issue come about where we used this in a nuisance matter to abate a weed problem, and everything went well, it's kind of a test drive on it. If anybody has any questions or comments or anything, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. All right, there are no other questions. I will open up the public hearing, if you'd like to speak on this. Feel free to do so, Whitney. Fair enough. All right, I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council? I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Vess, a second by Ms. Morris. Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries. She spoke louder, darling.
It's okay.
That was all of us. All right, next up, Resolution 2024-55.
Resolution Number 2024-55, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute two contracts with National Valuation Services of Springfield Incorporated, with the amounts not to exceed $15,000 for appraisal services. Presenting is Street Superintendent Jeff Frisell.
Mayor and council, good evening. As Becca said, this resolution will allow us to enter into a contract with National Valuation Services to provide fair and adequate compensation for properties affected on two different projects. The first project is the Cherry Street Stormwater Project. Hopefully, this is the final phase of that project that will go from South Becky Circle to North Street. And then the second project is the Old Wilderness Side Rock Project, extending from 14 to the Cox Property on Old Wilderness Road. These monetary amounts for this contract are within budget, and so it is staff's recommendation to approve this, these contracts and move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Thanks, sir. All right, no other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this resolution, do so at this time. We'll close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff? I will accept the motion.
So may.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Ogden. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. All right, next up, Resolution 2024-56.
Resolution Number 2024-56, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the offering of special obligation bonds for sale. Presenting is Finance Director Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, mayor and council. This resolution basically just gives, council gives, is giving authority to our financial advisor and bond counsel to offer $15 million in bonds to finance the police department building. So this is just keeping you in the loop that this is what we're doing and moving forward with that, and just authorizing resolution to do so. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just one quick comment.
I have an open public hearing.
I'm sorry. That's funny. One quick comment. As Jennifer mentioned, it's the bonds are for $15 million, but just to be clear, the project's estimated to be about 15.2. We are going to go ahead and take the .2, probably and pay that in cash, because there will be some fees and things a lot to pay with, on the $15 million bond, so I just want to make sure council is aware. Although the bond's $15 million, we're still looking at about 15.2 million dollar project.
Thank you, Mr. Lyles. Any questions? If not, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this resolution, do so at this time. I will close the public hearing. If nothing else from council or staff, I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
There you go, darling. Got that first by Ms. Graham, second by Mr. Lucas. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, and the motion is carried. All right, last up, Resolution 2024-57.
Resolution Number 2024-57, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract in the amount of $12,422.52 with cordial repairs to the utility billing building. Presenting is City Administrator Jimmy Lass.
Thank you. Very hard to say that three times. Mayor, council, I know originally we had talked about demolishing the utility billing building, whenever we were going to build the new police department here on the governmental campus, but now that we have decided to move the police department to another piece of property, it's really opened up some opportunities here in this campus. So one of the first things I did is had that utility billing, building evaluated to see what kind of shape it was in, to see is it worth keeping, or do we need to go ahead and demolish it as we originally planned. They came back, and actually, I was pleasantly surprised that the building is actually in very good shape, and definitely, in my opinion, worth keeping. It does need some minor repairs that I brought before you tonight, an amount of $12,422. Those are small things, like there's a little water leak that we have to take care of, there's some birds and animals that are getting in the building, we got to replace some vents and some odds and ends throughout the whole building that that evaluation actually identified. So, but I will comment that it did identify a much larger repair that's going to need to be made, and I will be bringing that back to council in the very near future. The north wall of that building, when that building was first built, it was actually built to be able to add on to, so that wall was only built as a temporary wall, but it's became a permanent wall over the years because we've never built on to it. because we've never built on to it. So we've had some water leaks, and I know we have, staff has actually made some repairs to that wall in years past. So I did ask them to go ahead and evaluate that wall, and they did come back with some rough estimates. You know, so we're probably gonna look at about another $50,000 repair is what they're expecting, unless they get in there and, of course, come up with more problems that they're unaware of. But that wall really needs to be replaced in some type of permanent siding or brick or something put on the exterior. But, so I'll be bringing that back in the future. I just want to make sure council was well aware of that additional repair that will be coming. But those numbers just came in. So we weren't, I wasn't quite able to get everything together in time for this meeting. But I would like to ask council for permission to go ahead and enter into a contract with Handby Construction, because they are on our co-op, to go ahead and complete the minor repairs in the amount of $12,422. And then I'll bring the future repairs at a future date. Oh, and I will mention that we do have the money budgeted in this year's budget. We had $165,000 budgeted for demo, and since we're not going to demo that, my intention is to utilize those funds to make the necessary repairs. Be happy to answer any questions.
So do they believe the, the minor repairs will fix the majority of the flooding?
Yep. They're pretty confident it will fix the water leak that we have in the building and the animal critter problem we have, and there's some other minor things throughout. But they feel that that's gonna be the significant amount of repairs. And really, the north side of the building is holding up right now. It's just, it's going to leak again if we don't do something. So, but they think these will fix the repairs that's needed right away.
Protect the stuff that's in the basement while we have to keep it there for the next.
Basement's a whole different thing when some pump quits working, you know? So I'm gonna be looking at that in the future, too, and maybe some type of alarm system when that thing doesn't work, or, I don't know. We're gonna have to address that in the future. We know we're gonna have to address it. But the top floor is definitely usable.
Yeah, remind me about that. There's like a $20 solution for that. That'll send a text if water gets high. Okay. Any questions? Thank you, sir. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, go ahead and do so. Probably not. All right, I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council or staff? I will accept the motion.
So may.
Second.
First by Ms. Morris, a second by Mr. Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. The motion is carried. Okay, a couple of things. First up, Saturday was Guns and Hoses. Way to go, Nixa PD. Finally got that win. I was lucky enough to not only throw out the first pitch, but I had to be the designated hitter for one of the guys, and I am still having issues walking. I didn't realize how far it is to first base. That is quite a run. But no, it was a really good time, good turnout. It just, I think it keeps getting bigger every year. It's for a great cause, for CC 100, so it was great. Good to see some of you guys out there. It was awesome. Also, I'm probably gonna steal someone else's thunder, but this Friday, 5:30 to 8:30 at McCully Park, Halloween Spooktacular Free Event, sponsored by Mac Dental again. How long have they been sponsoring that, Matt?
Great question. Seven or eight years, maybe more? But the last several. They're a great sponsor. We love it when our dentist hands out candy.
Yeah, I know. I love the fact that a dentist sponsors Halloween. That's security.
And the Easter.
It's a good investment, really.
I mean, all the candy events and the dentist is in.
Yep.
Mac Dental's great.
So we'll have what? Well, the parks, police, fire will be there. What, haunted maze, dancing, face painting?
All of the above, yeah. Lots of games and activities, laser tag, DJ. So there's some dance routines and things that they'll teach the kids. It'll be a great family, family event.
And the Enchanted Trail of Spookiness, I saw. Sounds fun.
They threatened to put me out there.
And then go ahead and mark your calendars. Sunday, December the 8th is the Christmas Parade at 2 o'clock.
That is correct.
What was the theme this year?
I'm sorry?
The theme, was it old time? What was the theme this year?
It's Nixa Past, Present, and Future. So it's going back, Christmas Over the Decades with Nixa. So the last 70 years of Nixa Christmas Parades. So open theme, kind of.
We dress like old people of Nixa.
Going back over all 70 years of our Christmas parade.
I wanna dress like Jimmy.
Ouch. And just don't forget that Friday night.
That's the future part, young, future part.
That Friday night before is the mayor's tree lighting ceremony.
Yes. Want to talk to you about that, by the way. Okay.
Can I give you one other event?
Oh, keep going, man.
November 9th is our Veterans Day Ceremony at the X Center at 9:00 AM, and that is being put on by the VFW.
What time does that start?
At 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, okay. Because I think. It's the week before deer season, finally. That's awesome. I know. That's exciting. Okay, any other updates from staff?
Just a couple of quick things. State of the Community is coming up, October 29th. So if you have tickets for that, don't forget to be there. And then, let's see, well, offices will be closed November 11th, so for Veterans Day. So that will, offices will be closed on that Monday. And then I'll just mention, because Whitney already mentioned it, and I was gonna mention Lead Ozarks. So fantastic program coming up. So if it is something that you are interested in and have not got tickets yet, let us know, and we'll work on getting those. So one of the instructors is pretty shady, but the rest of them are okay. Just clarification, I'm shady.
Oh, we knew.
I'll give you one other update unrelated to events, but the splash pad is moving right along as well. And so Branco is moving very quick on the splash pad. They've got all the fixtures set. They're working on the plumbing as we speak, and then we'll get started on the filtration building and the pit and everything next week. They're hoping to start pouring a little bit of concrete next week, but they're moving very fast. But they assure me it will slow down when the building gets started. So the building itself will take a little bit of time, but it's looking good. If you haven't been by, definitely go check it out. It's a nice, big splash pad.
And for those who don't know, you can go to the project tracker on nixa.com and see updated photos and notes about where at in the progress and everything, so. Yes, thank you, Mr. Orf. Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, you're fine. I was just gonna say that basketball season is getting underway for rec sports, and can you give us an update?
Yeah, basketball started practices this week. We start games the first Saturday in November. We've got like 750 kids, give or take, playing basketball. I mentioned to Aaron that we are at or right near our max capacity with that, that program. And so it's a huge increase over last year, and so luckily, a lot of our older kids came out to play, and which is great. We have more room in that division than we do in the younger divisions. And so the biggest problem that you may hear about down the road here is that the gymnasium is basically closed from 5:30 to 8:30, five nights a week, and then closed most of Saturday as we get games and practices in. And so the X Center Gym is very busy.
How are we on staff as far as scorekeepers and referees and everything?
So far, so good. I mean, we can always use more, but we're looking pretty good. We have a nice returning crew from last year, which is always great to improve upon that. And then we've got some new, some new faces. So looking, looking pretty good so far. But if anybody's still looking for a job and interested in refing or scorekeeping, come see us.
Perfect.
I did have one other thing. The Drug Takeback Event is this Saturday as well at Walgreens. Officer Forgie and myself, again, will be taking any unused, unwanted prescription or over-the-counter medications. We'll be there from 9:00 AM to, no, 10:00 AM, sorry, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Perfect. All right. Anything else from anybody? All right. Fair enough. Nothing else. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.